The Clay County Commission to Order, we will begin with our invocation. Teresa Leeming is here to lead us in prayer. Please proceed.
Heavenly Father, we come into your presence this evening and we thank you for all the blessings and provisions that we enjoy in Clay County. We ask that you guide us, give us wisdom and insight to lead and to make just decisions for the people of Clay County. Help us to make the best choices for the opportunities and issues that arise so that all residents can enjoy a safe and prosperous community. Open our eyes and minds to new and creative ideas that not only maintain but project our county forward in excellence, livability, and justice. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Withington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Johnson? Sorry.
Moved to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion's been moved for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Our next agenda item, our public comments. Are there any members of the public here wishing to comment and address those comments to the commission? Seeing none. That brings us to this evening's consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless the commissioner requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are fourteen items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is approval of the commission meeting minutes from March 6th, March 13th, March 20th, and March 21st. Resolution 2025-90, approving invoice payments for Clay County from the period of March 15th to March 21st. There are 258 invoices totaling an amount of $1,321,705.66. Resolution 2025-92 is approving professional service contracts with Beacon Mental Health, Clay County Office of Dispute Resolution, Northland Coalition, and the Clay County Health Center for the allocation of opiate settlement funding. Resolution 2025-97 is approving the sale or disposal of surplus auction items as stipulated per Article 7 of Chapter 7 of the County Code of Ordinances. Resolution 2025-87 is approving the proposal to develop a space utilization study for Clay County Rooney Justice Center, Public Safety, and the Detention Center to encompass a 10-year plan with FFS Architects. Resolution 2025-95 is approving to accept reimbursement from the state block grant agreement for the stabilization project, the Clear Creek Stabilization Project between Modot and Clay County, which is out at the airport. Resolution 2025-98 is approving the aviation project consultant agreement for electrical upgrades with Lochner at the airport. Resolution 2025-99 is approving an aviation project for consulting agreement for the taxiway and apron pavement seal coat project with Lochner out at the airport. 2025 Ordinance 08 is approving of the off-system bridge program agreement for replacement of the bridge on Rush Creek between the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission and the county. Resolution 2025-96 is approving an agricultural acreage lease at Little Plaque Park with A&amp;A Farms. Resolution 2025-101 is approving an agricultural acreage lease at Crow Creek Maintenance Shop and Picnic Arm with Rash Brothers LLC. Resolution 2025-24 is approving a memorandum of understanding between the Clay County Sheriff's Office and the City of Kearney for emergency dispatching services. Resolution 2025-100 is approving a memorandum of understanding between the Clay County Sheriff's Office and the Kearney Fire Protection District for emergency dispatching services. And resolution 2025-93 is appointing members to the Clay Platt Ray Mental Health Board.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda, Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Are there any discussion or questions to be had from the commission? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to this evening's regular agenda. First item on that regular agenda is 2025-94. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-94 is a request for the waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error by Martin and Rebecca Reynolds. I believe Ms. Reynolds is in the audience to present information to the commission.
Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
I, is she here, you say?
I have a question after this. I could put in two words.
No problem. We can get back to you. That's not an issue. If the applicant would like to come forward? And as you're making your way forward, and this goes for anybody who wishes to address the commission, please make sure the green light is on, that you speak clearly into the microphone, state your name, and then make your comments to the commission. And you can pull the microphone down however is comfortable for you to speak.
When I turn my...
Oh, go ahead and state your name. I'm sorry.
Rebecca Reynolds.
Thank you.
We were just requesting that because of all of the mix-ups, not our fault that we have these fees, late fees and everything, taken off our taxes.
Commissioner Withington? There we go.
So usually in the packet, we see a check with the date on the check. I don't see that in this packet. Do we know what the date on the check was?
I turned it in to the Price Toper December 29th. It was not postmarked till...
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the date on the check, do you know what date was written on the check?
Yes, I do. I have it right here. It was... I believe it was like December 29th because I took it in that morning. They told me the mail would go out that morning.
Okay, that's fine. I see our collector back there nodding her head also. So, you know, we've had a lot of problems with the post office screwing up over the last couple of years. So as long as we all know that the check was written on the 29th, that's, to me, she's done her due diligence to pay on time. It's not her fault. The post office screwed up. So with that in mind, I want to make a motion that we approve 2025-94 with the box marked approved to refund her interest and penalties.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-94 with a box checked approves on the document. With that, Commissioner, would you have further comments you'd like to make?
I just wanted to know what the date on the check was and she answered.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, you are next.
So I just want to clarify, I agree with the postmark issue, but it says here that you received the check with an unpaid balance of 505, like the check wasn't enough to cover the balance. Is that true?
That is a different, that's a separate, that was not our personal property, or that was our personal property. I made a mistake in, a $5 mistake, which as soon as I got that, I paid that plus the penalty on that particular one. It's too different. Here's the check for the late fee on that one.
So there's two different checks. One was for personal property and one was for your real estate. And so the one that was not postmarked correctly by the post office apparently was for your real estate taxes?
And I'm not sure why, because they were both in the same envelope.
Oh. So both checks were in the same envelope?
I've got notice on this one that I had made the $5 mistake, which I right away paid the penalty, paid the $5. And then in March, I get this 500 and some late fee and on the other one. So I'm not sure.
I'm still not understanding. I might have to have the collector address this, but it says January 15th, 9:30 a.m., the collector's office received her check posted $5,149.36 with an unpaid balance of $505.25 remaining and sent the receipt to Martin H. and Rebecca L. Reynolds. Is that, is that the penalty amount? What, I don't understand. What's that other $505 about?
That's my penalty amount that I got in March.
Okay, I need to talk to the collector here.
Here is the, here is my tax one. Here is the check that I wrote for the amount that this was.
Ma'am, I have a question for the collector. That's for her.
But don't go anywhere. We still have, want to hear from you.
So Barbara, the question is, I'll let you introduce yourself first.
Barbara O'Reilly, Collector.
So my question is, it sounds like a check came in, but the way I'm reading it, the check wasn't enough. But I just want to make sure I'm reading that right or what the issue is?
It was late. It was marked the... We received it on the 15th.
Right.
It was dated the 2nd. And she stated that she put it in the post office box at... Where was it? Yeah, Price Toper.
But the amount that you received, was that the full amount for her taxes?
Right, but it was late. But it wasn't...
So the, it says on here there's an unpaid balance of $505.
Uh huh. That would have been...
Is that the late fee?
Mm-hmm. Penalty and interest.
Okay. That's what I wasn't clear up. It sounded like you...
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments going forward?
Actually, I do have one more.
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry. It says $505 is the unpaid, but then on the other thing, it says the amount contested is $547. Why is, why do we have discrepancy there? How much was the late fee? $505 or $547?
$574.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Deanna Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. What you're seeing is the initial $500, $500 charge is for the January late fee penalty interest. The additional is because she got a delinquent notice in March, so you've got additional months of interest that are added.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Ma'am, if you'd like to come forward and kind of give us your, you know, any kind of a summation to tell us, you know, just kind of restate your case because we'd like to give the citizen kind of the last word. So please go right ahead.
Well, as I stated, I took it in the 29th of December. I was told that they do pick up the mail every day. We had gone two weeks without mail, so I took it to Price Toper. She, I was told here that it wasn't even postmarked till 17 days later. So then I get this late fee for the 10%, 10 and a half percent for January. Then I get another, because then I don't get anything from this until March. So I'm tacked on another 1 and 1/2 percent for February and another 1 and 1/2 percent for March, which is $500.
Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you have a question?
Thank you. Well, just a question for the commission, if I could. Is that?
Absolutely.
So unfortunately, my computer isn't working either. There's Commissioner Thompson, so I'm trying to, trying to play along with my ear here. Help me understand what you, what you all understand to be the situation with regard to both checks being in the same envelope, but one arriving, the personal property did arrive on time?
And I even got back in February that I had my mistake. I had shorted it $5. So I right, I paid that penalty plus the $5 on...
But aside, okay, aside from the $5 short, it was not marked as being late?
It was, and I paid a $49 penalty.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I paid a penalty on that also.
So both came in late? Both the real, okay, both the real estate and the personal property came in late and they both got assigned a late penalty?
Yes.
And they, they both ultimately got postmarked like the 17th or something?
1/15, which was 17 days after, but it was, they were both postmarked 1/15.
And you had taken them both into Price Toper the 29th?
Yes.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Withington, but if you're doing a follow-up, okay, okay. Commissioner Johnson, you go ahead and go, and then I will come back to Commissioner Withington.
I just want to clarify, the information I have says that the envelope was postmarked January 2nd, but it arrived at the collector's office two weeks later.
Okay.
On January 15th.
Okay, that's what I was told by your office. Yes.
So, so it was postmarked January 2nd, and it took two weeks to get it crossed down to the, to the collector's office. If I'm reading that right, and I'm getting the head nod back there. Okay.
Commissioner Withington?
I feel like we've seen this problem before where multiple checks were put into an envelope and only one was processed. Is that...
I remember that.
I can't remember what the issue was, but last year we had the same issue where somebody put two checks in one envelope and only one check was processed and another one was sent back. So this isn't the, this isn't the first time you guys...
If you guys want to discuss back, please go right ahead.
I kind of feel like we've had this problem before.
Yeah, but I don't think that's the issue here. I think that both checks were received, right? One was not for the correct amount. The property, the personal property tax was not for the correct amount. If I'm, and so that's the error on your part. So you paid the fee for that and fixed that. That's taken care of. What you're saying is the, the real estate tax, the big one, that was the proper amount. You paid it. It was postmarked late, but you mailed it beforehand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so you're asking for the waiver on that part, not for the personal property tax.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I got that. So I'm fine with giving, giving her, her interest and penalty back on that one because, you know, she did her job. She turned it in on time to the post office. And, you know, we've seen before where the post office will post it, mark it two or three days later and then ship it, you know? And, and even Congressman Sam Graves last year, earlier this year, was doing an investigation into issues at the post office. So I, I tend to believe that she did her job.
And to your point, I think to underscore your point, it was postmarked on the 2nd and didn't arrive here till the 15th.
Yeah. And, and it's not going, it's, it's in the same county, right? Yeah. So which, which price shop did you go to?
Had the one on Cedar.
Okay, so that's like just a few miles away. That's not like, yeah. So, so I tend to believe, believe her. And I, and I, you know, I get that she's, you know, made a mistake on the $5, so that's fine. But the big one, I think we, I still stand by approving and giving her, her interest in late penalties.
Any further discussion? I'm not sure, but have we interpreted in the past that it is, while the statute, I think, says an error on the part of the county, I think there has been some interpretation that it be an error on the part of the government?
Well, Jay found a, Jay found a statute to talk about it, but then they came back and said that we had to have the Postmaster General write a letter. And I think our, from what we have, the precedent we have set as a body was, we know the Postmaster's not going to say they screwed up.
Right.
Our congressmen have admitted on behalf of the post office that the post office was screwing up. So I think our precedent was, as long as they have the check dated and she can prove that she dated it on the 29th, we tend to side with them. So.
Yeah, I was just saying, because it's, it's an error, although the post, the cancellation on the postmark is, is January 2. Commissioner Lawson, you were seeking recognition?
Well, you know, to support that theory, we've had people here come in that have taken something into Kearney and they sent it to downtown Kansas City to postmark it and then send it all the way back. So, and then it's delivered. So with that in mind, you know, I think that what he's saying is correct. If it were postmarked on the 15th or the 20th, I'd have some concerns. But the 2nd, and she mailed it on the, whatever day.
49.
29.
28.
28, yeah. So that kind of bears that theory up.
Further discussion? All right. If there's nothing you'd like to add, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time to come in. That brings us to our last issue on our regular agenda. That would be 2025-91. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-91 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from March 15th to March 21st. There are three invoices totaling $1,061.10.
Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2025-91.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2025-91. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Motion passes five in favor, one recusal.
That concludes this evening's regular agenda. Next are discussion items. There is one item up for discussion. Administrator?
Um, yes. So we have on your agenda to discuss the commission's desire to have investment into the Kansas City Area Development Council. As commission will recall, the president, CEO, Tim Cowden, was here last week and presided information to the commission about the KCA DC and the benefits to being in that organization. I did provide some additional information in your packet with regard to that, that an organization type of investment annually is $10,000. With that, it allows number of individuals from the county to attend any full investor meetings. We talked a little bit about what those are. Under the organizational umbrella that if the county chooses to do this, you can name not only commissioners but staff, but also we could name the Clay County EDC, which has in the past also been partnership with the city with regard to this. They would then also get the mailings and they could certainly also attend any of the full investor meetings. In discussions with the EDC, they were willing to contribute $2,500 towards the $10,000 annual membership fee, investment fee. There is some discussion about, well then, how do they structure? They do have a board, KCA DC does. And of their board, they do allocate four slots on their board for public sector, community representatives, two from Missouri and two from Kansas. And so if such time in, in the county is an investor and you wanted to have a commissioner's name presented on the slate to take up one of those positions, there's a process... presented on the slate to take up one of those positions, there's a process to do that. And the president, Mr. Cowden, would print the name on the slate for consideration, and that would be a two-year term. So happy to answer any questions, but wanted to open it up to the commission to see if there was a desire to move forward with KCADC.
Discussion? I'll just go ahead and start it off, just to say, I think that, I think this is something that we should pursue. I think it's a worthwhile thing. It is, it is a group that I think that we would do well to be involved with, and while we would be in a position to support other entities within the county, it also gives us the opportunity to be in the room and be able to get that information early on. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Well, I'll just note that I recall during our budget discussion, I specifically asked about this item, and I thought at that time that we were, we were of at least consensus to move forward with this. So I guess I'll repeat what I said that time, which was that having seen them in action and knowing what they do, I have no problem with this sort of investment. I would just note that as we have talked about as a group about economic development and its importance, that to be engaged with the group that is primarily prospecting across the country for businesses to come to Kansas City, that if we are serious about economic development, we do need to be at that table. But I would also note, even if there are projects that do not come to Clay County, we also compete as a place to live. So even if a project were to go somewhere in Platte County or somewhere in Kansas City, and people start asking, where should I move to, where should I live at, Clay County should be one of the top choices that gets thrown out there. But I do believe in order to make sure that happens, we have to be at the table, whether it's fighting for the business or fighting for the residents. And so to me, especially knowing that Clay County EDC is willing to throw in some funds, that's basically a $7,500 buy-in, if I'm doing my math right, that's not bad to be at the table, and I'll just kind of leave it at that. Thanks.
Commissioner Lawson?
I agree that there's some value there. I was highly impressed with the big Google thing that they had done. I mean, I know they're active. That came to Clay County and probably brought a lot of people with it. However, do have concerns. You're right, 75 is a huge amount of money, but, and I'm glad to see EDC wants to throw something in there, but I do have concerns how valuable this really will be to us and what it really will bring to Clay County. Just five people moving into some subdivision out there isn't really worthwhile, as far as I'm concerned. So I have concerns, that's all I have to say. And I think we've got so many people, you know, all of our, the small entities, all the towns in Clay County, all have their EDC groups, and they do a pretty darn good job for each one of those communities, pretty impressed with what they do. But that's a lot of money, and I have, the biggest concern I have is how involved we will be. Will we really be at the table? Will they really be looking at Liberty? Will they be looking at Carney? You know, all these little entities out there. I just have concerns about that. I think it's primarily Kansas City, in my opinion, but I'm just not sure that I want to pull that plug yet. So just my thought.
Commissioner Withington?
I have similar concerns as Joanne. How much have we budgeted, 7,500 or 10,000?
We have the 10,000.
So if we did move, so, and we get two board seats?
No. Well, you get unlimited individuals that can participate in the full investor meetings. If you want to put a Clay County representative on the board, there would be one Clay County representative, they would have to be on the slate, and there are only, and there are only four seats that are available. So when, and they're two-year terms. So when one of those comes up, I don't have that date, and it would be, the name would be put on the slate and would be dependent on if they got voted in.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I have similar concerns as Joanne. I just, I just don't know what value it would provide to the county since most of the cities already are already members, and if a company's looking to relocate to Clay County, they're not looking at unincorporated Clay County, and if they are, that place is probably going to already be annexed into the local municipality. I mean, what's that, you guys just did, what was that 10,000-person development over in Liberty? What's it called?
Oh, the one around Liberty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that was always...
I think that was always Liberty Land. Now, there was some, there was a part of, just a small part up on the north side of that development, as I recall, that became part of Liberty, if I recall.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just don't know what value it would provide to us, since, like I said, the cities are already represented, and if a company's going to relocate, they're not looking at unincorporated Clay County. And if they are looking at unincorporated Clay County, it's probably going to be annexed. So that's just where I'm at.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I agree. I'm against this. I'm against it for a couple of reasons. One, I've always said it's real easy to spend other people's money, and when we spend taxpayers' money, I think it's important to know that we're getting our money's worth. This particular deal, first of all, to Commissioner Withington's point, I think just about every city's already involved. I don't know that our membership will change anything whatsoever, as far as development is concerned. On top of that, I think more importantly, I want to look at the nexus or the, what's really behind this? The EDC used to pay for this. We stopped funding as much as we normally did, the EDC, I think it was last year, the day before or something, we had some issues with the EDC, and we was asked them to make some changes to their bylaws. They've said several times that they will, at least in private conversations, but they still have not done that. And so what they're doing, instead of paying for this, and I get they don't have as much money, because we haven't funded as much, they come to us to ask us to pay for more things for them instead, which is the same thing for us paying for. Fix your bylaws first, and then we'll talk. We pay $10,000 to the EDC already, just for our membership. I believe it's a $10,000 membership, roughly.
To diamond level? I'm not sure what the diamond level is.
And I apologize, I don't have that number, but you're correct. We do have a membership in the EDC.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that the diamond membership is, to EDC is $10,000. So we already pay that. So essentially, we've given them money that could cover this. But I don't like, I guess I don't like the way this is taking place. I would love for the EDC to pay for it, and that's what the EDC's for, for economic development. And I'm a big believer in economic development, but I don't like the end around of the finances and the way this is being played out, you know, because of the politics that are going on behind the scenes, or actually not behind the scenes, but out in the public. So that's where I'm at with this, and I just don't think it's worth us to spend the taxpayer money on this.
Further discussion? Does anyone have anything to add? So obviously someone else can, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just posed it in right as you were speaking. I'll just say, you know, I would be perfectly fine contributing to what is probably a worthwhile effort. That being said, you know, I think Commissioner Johnson makes some good points about, you know, his views on this, and, you know, I think we did take the step of, you know, decreasing these kinds of outlays. Now, this is a little bit different. This is an actual membership, as opposed to just a, you know, direct contribution toward programs. But I think it fits in the spirit of, you know, we sort of eliminated those expenditures, and I would be comfortable not making this contribution in the spirit of that new policy. And, you know, like I say, I think you make a good point about how the history of this has played out with regard to the funding and with regard to some of the requests that have gone back and forth. And so I think I'll be okay with not funding this entity and perhaps keeping an open mind going forward.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. So I think I know where this is going, but I will just point out, you know, economic development is something that can take years. That Google project took seven years to come together. I want to be cautious when we start talking about things in terms of, what's my return? What am I getting back? Because that seems to suggest there's a transaction here that I pay 10,000 and I get X. Well, you might, but you might not get it for several years, and yet I don't think anyone would argue that. It's great Google came. It's great, just as it was great that Meta came to our county in Kansas City. I just, I've been at that particular game for a while, and I know that when we start asking, when do we get those dollars returned to us because something came, you could be waiting a long time, or maybe not at all, but if you're not in the game to begin with, I know what you're going to get, and that's nothing. I would suggest that, at the end of the day, whether it's this investment or any other, you get out what you put into it. If you don't know what you're going to do with it, and you don't see the value for your staff to get it, then, fine, we shouldn't do it. But that just means, in my book, we're not in the economic development game. We will be happy to get whatever we get, and if someone else gets it for us, fantastic. But I'm also very trepidatious when it's inferred, and I don't know that you meant to say this, but when it's inferred, we're really not going to do anything unless and until the CDC changes its board composition, well, then that also says to me, yeah, we have a disagreement with how it's organized, but the service and the process of economic development is different than that. So I'm very trepidatious about conflating those two things, because if they never change, for whatever reason, then it tells me we're out of the economic development game, and good luck Kansas City, Liberty, and everybody else. To me, there is a bigger value to it than simply the transaction for us. And like anything else, the wheel will turn one day, and we're going to be, we're going to be the winner. The next day, it may be somebody else. But again, if you don't have your hand on the wheel, you don't have a shot at all. And I would cautiously advise that, you know, sometimes you got to see it in action and be in it to know whether or not it's a good deal or not. The buy-in is low. And everyone's comments that, hey, I don't quite see the value, you may be absolutely right, but I would at least throw out there the notion that you can always back away the next time around. Tim was here, he's made his pitch, okay. $7,500 later, we see nothing, or we don't feel comfortable with that investment, then Tim, you've had your shot, and it didn't work out. But again, if he doesn't get his shot, then we already know the answer. So I appreciate your indulgence in letting me come back with that, but, and certainly the will of the commission is the will of the commission, that's cool, but I at least have to throw that out there. So thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
My husband calls you a wordsmith. I'm going to say something that is probably going to get me into trouble, but who cares? Yeah, too late. I have not, we talk about economic development, and we throw that around left and right. We, for years, invested in Clay County EDC. In the last few years that I've really been involved with the county, I have seen one little brewery company that I can point to and say, that's what they brought here. For all the money that we put out, taxpayer dollars, that's what we got. So we are involved with the Clay County EDC, like Diana said, we've given their money to be a member. I think that's great. We go to the meetings, we meet a lot of business people, we've all been down to meet this latest group that did the cold storage. Great facility. I'm highly impressed with them. But they came on their own. Nobody brought them. And so as far as I'm concerned, that 7,500 can be used in a better way for betterment, for roads, I don't care what it's used for, but I do not see the value in putting that money in this organization. They say that, as I'm reading this, the county would identify individuals designated to receive KCADC communications. Is it, is it possible to include Northland Clay County Economic Development Council under the county's organizational investment? We're going to get, we don't go to the meetings, like we sit on the board, as we do with the EDC. There's just so many things, it's almost that we're putting in the money and we're kept at arm's length, and I just don't see the value. So I think we work with our cities, and we partner, maybe even, you know, work with Platte County or whatever we want to do, but we do it, so to speak, in-house and save the money for something else. Just my thought.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I get that, you know, it's always nice to have a seat at the table, but Meta and Google came without this county being a part of the KCADC, and again, the cities are members of the KCADC, and those are the ones that are going to be making those decisions within the borders of their own municipalities. So if they, if they need anything from the county, they can come to us and we can help them and not spend 7,500 or 10,000, whatever it is. I just, I just think that, you know, we need to be wise with the money. I get it, it's a low buy-in, 7,500, 10,000, whatever it is. But at the same time, again, the companies are not relocating to unincorporated Clay County that we have jurisdiction over when it comes to that, and if the municipalities need help, we're always here to help them. So I do think we're in the economic development game, but I just, I just don't see what the value of this is, so.
I'd like to be one of the few people to support Commissioner Wagner's opinion. I think this sends a signal, and that signal is, we're going to passively wait until economic development opportunity drops in our laps, and we are not pursuing it. As far as our relationship with EDC, we are at present a diamond level member, which I believe 10,000 sounds like about the right buy-in. We presently have one seat on the executive board and three seats on the general board. No other entity has that. Now, whether that's of value or not, obviously can be discussed, but to say that they have not put themselves out to extend something to us, I think is probably to not take those facts into account and give them their proper weight. The other thing is, I've said in meetings within EDC with municipalities, they are mystified as to why we will not engage with EDC in a more constructive way. They're looking at it from the outside. So they, what they are seeing is what businesses see, and that is a disconnect here, and I think that is, I think this is a missed opportunity, but on the other hand, we will survive. This is not exactly Armageddon. This is not the end of the world. But if the decision of this commission is to not go forward on this, you know, so be it, it's not going to be, Clay County will not fall into the trash heap of history by any stretch, but I'm just saying, we should be cognizant of the signal we are sending. Commissioner Withington?
This is the last thing I have to say. I do not think that this commission is passively waiting for anything. Again, we are not members of KCADC, and one of the largest developments in this county's history is being, has been discussed in North Kansas City, and our, this commission has been at that table. We haven't passively said, no, North Kansas City, you. We led on that when North Kansas City did it. So... So, and another thing that just irritates me is, these groups have their little cliques, and they have their little group think, and they can sit there and say, oh, we're mystified, North Clay County is not at the table. That's bullshit. We are at the table, and I'm sorry for saying that, but it just pisses me off, because we are at the table, we are here to support our, our cities. Platte County, look at Platte County. How many new developments have they had? They're getting all kinds of stuff in Platte County. The Platte County Commission doesn't support their EDC. It just irritates the hell out of me, when these groups get together, they have their group think, they say all this stuff, and they're, oh, we can't all be wrong, but they are wrong. This commission supports economic development, this commission will support any of our municipalities, and to say otherwise is just bullshit.
Do, do, by the way, you don't have to worry about saying this is the last thing I'll say. I will always recognize you, as long as we are still going. So don't, don't concern yourself with that. The other is, please be cognizant of the language used.
I, I, I'm sorry. I just, it just, I'm really passionate about it, and it just really irritates me when we hear, oh, well, we're being passive. We're not passive. We're at the table, we're doing everything that we can, and when our municipalities aren't leading on the largest development in this county's history, we were leading on that with the developer, not the municipality. So the, we could say, oh, well, we're disappointed in North Kansas City, because they were passively not doing anything, when we were leading. And so now for all these other entities to sit there and say, oh, well, the commission's just passively doing this, it's just, it's, it's wrong, it's not right. And again, we, those groups need to get out of the little group think, and look at things from our perspective, too.
Commissioner Lawson?
Boy, you hit the nail on the head. I, I feel, I, I enjoy going to the EDC, because I want to contribute. I wanted to be on the board, they put me on the board, I'm there. I, I really, when I go, you can make suggestions, I feel so very much like an outsider. They have, it's, it, you're right, it's cliquy. And the other day, you know, they always say, oh, we want you involved. The other day, when we were at that last meeting, one of the people sitting at the front there made the little snide remark about Clay County still hasn't paid anything. And I thought, if you want us to be a part, don't alienate us by making little hateful remarks. There's just so much that I feel I would like to see changed there, if possible, because I think the basis for it is great. We've got to have economic development, yes, that's important, but I see a lot of words and not a lot of action. And so consequently, I do feel it's cliquy, and I do feel like the contributions we, some of us try to make, are not received at all. So, you know, for my money, let's try to do what, what we do best, and that's work with our cities. We aren't, we're not ignoring economic development. We just feel, I think I feel, that what we're doing is right, just like he said. We led the fight on several things, and the county was very, very involved, and I saw a lot of good things come out of that. We, we didn't, didn't end the way we wanted it to, but we had no assistance at all from any of these organizations when we were doing that. They wanted to jump on board, and really back us, and help us, and I didn't see any of that. So I, I think we're better left, we're beating a dead horse here. I think the majority of us feel like, it ain't going to happen. So, you know, enough said.
Regardless of the dead horse metaphor, Commissioner Wagner, and anybody else who wants to jump in, please, I realize it does feel as though that we are, we have arrived at consensus, and that may well indeed be the case, but I want to allow all commissioners to have the maximum opportunity to express their viewpoints. Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized.
Thank you. I can't help, since Kip is here, to ask him a question.
Thought you were getting by, didn't you?
Really, two. One, Detroit Pistons, really, but I'll, I'll go away from that. Number two, we just recently spent a year doing a land use plan, as I recall. Is there any land uses that call for industrial warehouse, or other similar types of uses in that plan, and if so, where?
Yes, sir. Along the major routes, so 69 Highway, 92, 35, major routes through Clay County.
In unincorporated Clay County?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My point is, no city is going to offer those sites, if those, if those sites are to be offered, they will come from Clay County. And if we are unaware of anyone looking for a site, we cannot offer an unincorporated Clay County site, and we are therefore out of the game. And I'll just leave that there. I'm totally fine with where we're going, but I just offer, we have actually planned for those uses, and if we cannot find someone who wants to use those uses, then they will sit. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Whittington?
One last thing. Hey, Kip, do you know how many of those locations are in the annexation plans of Smithville and Carney? Because talking to the mayors, they would like to see those annexed into their municipalities.
So every, basically every parcel within a mile of city limits is in the managed growth area. So that's where we'll reach out to the city, and they will kind of guide what land use we use within that area.
And did they help identify those locations?
They did. There's an annexation map that's part of the newly adopted comprehensive.
And so these areas that we just discussed were in those annexation plans?
So now you're really testing me.
You can, you can, you can, you can, you don't have to answer it. If you don't know, you can send us an email or something.
So there are some areas, I believe, that are not within those annexation areas. It's a mix of areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I think the consensus that I get would be, no, but can I just, I, I think maybe the way to do this is, without taking a vote, would be just, I'd like to look around the commission, and just give me a, a head shake, and if you want to comment, certainly feel free, but I just want to kind of get a, get a consensus.
It's a discussion.
It's a discussion item.
Always on the discussion, never off. Yeah, yeah.
Here, yes. Yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay. It seems pretty clear that the consensus would be to not go forward with this.
Thank you.
Is there anything to add to the discussion before we leave this discussion item? I think I've, I've accurately reflected what the consensus view of the commission is. Very good. That ends this discussion item. That brings us to county administrator comments. Please proceed.
Just a couple of items. First is to remind everyone, the commission and the public, that Monday is the last day to register for the senior tax relief program. We will help individuals here at the courthouse, or at the annex, until 4 o'clock. Online, it will be open till 11:59 PM. We do have one last pop-up, where we will be at the annex on Saturday, I believe nine to four?
Ten to six.
I'm sorry, 10 to 6, for those that would like to come to the annex on Saturday, and for assistance in applying for that program. And then the other item is, the next business meeting of the commission is next Thursday, April 3, at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpen, we will start with you. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Lawson. I would have been so disappointed. You please proceed.
No, our next meeting is on April Fool's Day, right? Did you say the first?
No, your next meeting is April 3.
Oh, 3rd, okay, good, good. I'm glad about that. I, I just want to say a major, major, major thank you to our staff that has diligently worked to get this 190 taken care of. They have been totally, totally amazing. Anybody I've talked to has had nothing but glowing things to say, and I think besides Dieta, who kind of ramrodded it, our collector, our clerk, our, they had, who all did they have going out there and working?
Well, we hired temporary staff, along with our clerk's office, and our collector's office has been doing the pop-ups, and the onsite, and then certainly here at this facility, and at the annex, so, but even before that, the stand-up team, not only the, the clerk and the collector, but the recorder, our GIS department, our communications team, our assessor's office, our auditor's office, this has truly been a collaborative approach across the county organization to meet the needs of our citizens, and I will say this repeatedly, I believe Clay County has exceeded any other county in the state of Missouri of getting the word out, and taking the information and the applications to our constituents, and so very proud of our staff. They've worked very, very hard. And this is only phase one. We're still in phase two. In fact, we have, as of today, 16,684 applications we have received. We have certified and sent out to 6,115 that they are approved in the program. So we still have a lot of work to do after we close on Monday. We have about 10,000 applications to basically go through, and many of them have to be on a case-by-case basis to look into the details.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to minimize everything they've done. They've just been, and when you talk to the people that come in here, I'll come in during the week, and, and there'll be a number of folks out here in the hallway waiting, and, and you know, as they get ready to leave, sometimes I'll say, how'd it go, everything? Oh, they were wonderful. Oh, they're so nice, everybody's so helpful. So I, you know, just kudos to the staff. You guys, I always say, you're wonderful, but they have proven over and over how fantastic they are during this. It's not been a day at the beach, I know that. So, thank you all very much for what you've done.
Commissioner Whittington?
Just want to say happy opening day to everybody. Pageantry of opening day should be a national holiday. You're hearing it here first, the Arizona Diamondbacks, and the Royals will be in the World Series this year. Not going to pick who wins, though. Also, I want to say congratulations to the Oak Park men's basketball team. They won their first ever state championship. Sent them an invite to come here and get a honorary resolution, waiting to hear back. Also want to say congratulations, too many people to name, but a lot of our North Kansas City wrestlers, Carney wrestlers, won state championship this past week. And then also want to congratulate Brooklyn, Casaneda, and the girls at the Liberty Gymnastics Academy on winning state championship this past week, and also, so, a lot of, a lot of state champions, hopefully, I've invited all of them, so hopefully we'll, maybe not 32 this time, like we did with the soccer team, we'll do one each, but hopefully we'll have some state champions to recognize at a future commission meeting, so.
I want to say also congratulations, and echo Commissioner Lawson's comments about the program that we put forward, and I think it is something that we can certainly, one of many things that we as a county can point to is some pride, and say, Clay County did a top-notch job, and did a great job of making sure that this is available to the greatest numbers of qualified citizens possible, and the process was easy. I think I've said this before, but I'll say it again. Our household is one of those that has applied, and I will just say that it's a process so easy, even an elected official can figure out how to do it. And that's no mean trick in my case. I also want to congratulate and mention that earlier this week, I was able to attend Maplewood Community College Agricultural Annex opening. It's a really significant step, and they're really making a lot of progress in this agribusiness space. We are part of the agricultural corridor here in this area, and it stretches across the northern part of the state. They've been preparing professionals for agricultural and veterinary careers for almost 50 years now, which I'm afraid goes back to the time when I was a student there. I wasn't smart enough to be in, in any of those kinds of programs, but there we are. And so it was great to see them, it was great to see this new facility going forward, and I think that it's, it's, one of the things that impressed me was, one of the speakers was a student who is a farmer in northwest Missouri, a young man who works on his family farm. He had, he made the point that this isn't just for people who are going into agribusiness, or people who are going to be going into some industrial or a commercial. He is someone who is on a family farm, he will continue to work on his family farm, and this was something that helped give him some of the tools, skills, and knowledge that will make him a more effective small farmer in the future. So not only is it, is it great to see Maplewood's putting forward with this, but it is also great to see a, a young person who is determined to carry on a family farm and a family agricultural operation, because I, I think it's a concern that we, that we all have to some degree or another, that too many young people are leaving the farm, coming in for other opportunities, but if there's one thing we all have in common, and me more than most, and that is, we like to eat. So with that, congratulations to Maplewood's and the people who made that possible, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.